To the Board of County Commissioners meeting, we are in our afternoon session. And we are going to start with P 52. Please silence your cell phones if you have not done so already.
P 52, we have proof of publication in the September 18th, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item P 52 is in ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan to remove an area along Old Pasco Road from the rural neighborhood production area, which is within the urban expansion area and to include it into the urban service area. However, this item is being requested for a continuance to the March 11, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting in Dade City at 1:30 PM.
Please continue. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, P 53.
We have proof of publication in the November 27th, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Madam Chairwoman, there are two other continuances if you'd like to, they were on the addendum agenda.
Say that again?
There were two other continuances.
We can do the continuances first. Which is the next one?
AP 139.
Oh, 139, the addendum?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take up P 139. On my book, it's a pink tab. I don't know what you guys have there. But it should be in... Do you have it?
I have it.
What is it?
It's, Terry, why don't you describe the project?
Sure. Item AP 139 is a zoning amendment in the name of Tall Timbers MPUD by Extreme Team 41 LLC. This is a master plan unit development within connected city to allow 380 multifamily units and 180,000 square feet of non-residential uses on approximately 38 acres. However, we are requesting a continuance to the February 11, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting here in Dade City at 1:30 PM.
We have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the October 23rd, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Is it advertised as a continuance?
It was added to the addendum as a continuance. It wasn't on your original agenda.
And so let me ask a question on that, because that's what was spoken about this morning. What are the legalities of proper notice? Is it okay since it's a continuance or?
Well, so it was originally scheduled to be heard at this meeting.
Oh, was?
You continued it to this meeting from your October meeting.
Okay.
So you have to take some action on it. It's more appropriate to continue it than to bring it up and hear it because it wasn't on your regular agenda. So continuance is really the only thing you should be doing with it today.
But we didn't have to notice it again? Just continuing it to this date counted as a notification if we were to hear it today?
You continue items all the time and...
But don't they show up on the agenda?
They normally do show up on the agenda, yes. But anybody who had been at the first continuance would attend today thinking that it was going to be heard.
Okay.
It wasn't part of your agenda package, though in my view, a continuance is appropriate at this time.
Should we allow public comment?
You can call for public comment. If they decide that they wish to speak, then they won't be able to speak when you're really going to take the matter up. So, but is there anybody in the audience that had come for Tall Timbers MPUD?
Seeing no one, move to continue.
I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Terry, you had one more continuance?
Yes. Item AP 140.
Okay.
Which is the zoning amendment Crossways MPUD. This is a zoning request from AC Agricultural Zoning District and MPUD to allow for up to 40 single-family detached dwelling units and associated infrastructure on about 30 acres. We're requesting this be continued to a date uncertain.
This was originally scheduled for the November 12th, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting and scheduled to today. At that time, proof was noticed in the, was previously noted.
All right, just in case, is there anyone here to speak to this? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move, move to continue.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're back to P 53.
We are ready to begin.
Item P 53 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 21 from RES 12, residential 12 dwelling units per gross acre, to OF, office, and CON, conservation lands on approximately 0.95 acre of real property located on the north side of State Road 54, approximately 150 feet west of the intersection of Camp Indian Head Road and State Road 54. And providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. This comes to you with the recommendation to approve the comprehensive plan amendment.
Okay, any questions for Terry? Does anyone want to see a presentation? Is applicant here? If they want to speak or do they?
We have multiple members of the applicant team, I believe, online if needed.
All right, let me see if there's anyone here to speak against this project. P 53. Okay, seeing none?
Move approval.
Second?
All in favor?
This is in ordinance, so it's roll call vote.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Wakeham.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. P 54.
We have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the December 25th, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P 54 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Ordinance Number 20-23 as amended contracting the boundaries of the North AR1 of Pasco Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. This is file number PDE 250040, and this comes with the recommendation to approve by roll call vote.
All right. This is a county initiated?
No.
No?
This would not be a county initiated.
Okay.
These are all changes to establishments or amendments to CDD's, CDD boundaries, the next couple.
Okay. I'm going to guess no one's here to speak against this.
Anybody, anybody wish to speak to the?
P 54.
P 54, the North AR CDD contraction.
We have no one signed up or online.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move approval. Second?
All in favor?
Roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Roll call.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Wakeham.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye, thank you. P 55.
P 55, we have proof of publication of the hearing at this time of this matter on the December 25th, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P 55 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Ordinance Number 18-01 as amended contracting the boundaries of the Epperson Ranch 2 Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. This comes with the recommendation to adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
Okay, anyone wish to speak to this item?
We have no one signed up or online.
I'll take a motion.
Move approval. Second?
All in favor, it's a roll call vote?
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Wakeham.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye. Three.
Three.
I was parked in the wrong parking space. P 56.
We have proof of publication, again, Tampa Bay Times, December 25th, 2024, for this time.
Item P 56 is PDE 250042. This is in ordinance amending Pasco County Ordinance Number 16-07 as amended contracting the boundaries of the Morata Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. And this comes to you with the recommendation to adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
All right, anyone wish to speak to this one? Okay, take a motion.
Move approval. Second?
Roll call?
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Wakeham.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
She's not here.
Had a step down. District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Next?
P 57, we have proof of publication of the hearing at this time of this matter in the Tampa Bay Times, December 25th, 2024.
Item P 57 is in ordinance amending Pasco County Ordinance Number 18-33, expanding the boundaries of the Morata 2 Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. This comes to you with the recommendation to adopt the ordinance by roll call vote.
Anyone wish to speak to this item? Take a motion.
Second?
Roll call?
District 1, Commissioner Oakley. Oakley?
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Wakeham.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. P 58.
P 58, we have proof of publication in Tampa Bay Times and edition of November 27th, 2024 supplemented by an affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P 58 is PDE 250047. This is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 22 from RES 6, residential 6 dwelling units per gross acre, to COM commercial on approximately 0.94 acre of real property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Veridian Way and State Road 54. And providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. This comes to you with the recommendation to adopt the ordinance and by roll call vote. And there is a presentation if desired.
I don't need one, but does anyone else need one? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak against this ordinance?
The only person we show online appears to be representative of the applicant.
All right, seeing no opposition, I take a motion.
Move approval. Second?
Roll call?
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Wakeham.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. And P 59?
P 59, we have proof of publication in the December 18th, December 25th, 2024, January 1st, 2025, and January 8th, 2025 editions of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P 59 is PDE 250080. This is in ordinance establishing the Newport Corners Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for authority and power of the district, providing for powers and duties of the district, providing for the board of supervisors of the district, providing for the district budget, providing for functions of the district, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. This comes to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation to adopt the ordinance by roll call vote. There was an updated ordinance that was submitted and circulated to be consistent with what was advertised for this item. So, an updated revised ordinance should be with you all.
Okay. So, is there anyone here to speak to P 59, against P 59? All right, I'll take, anyone online?
We have no one online for this item.
Okay.
Move approval. Second?
Roll call vote?
District 1, Chairman Oakley. Commissioner Oakley. District 2, Commissioner Wakeham.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Okay, we're now going to move on to our public hearing items. Is that correct? We're done with the addendum? There. Then our county attorney will read the procedures, including explanations of our flow.
There are two, two resoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commissioners recommend it, approval, and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If the staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative. And the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request that the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient. For this board to take action, please limit your comments to those criteria for rezoning found within the board's Land Development Code. Mr. Clerk, would you like to swear in public?
If there is anyone who intends to speak to these items, any of these rezoning items, please stand at this time.
Or if you're online, right? Pay attention.
Yes. Or online. If there is anyone, again, if your intention is to speak for or against any of the upcoming items under the rezoning, please raise your right hand. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony given these matters is the truth, so have you got? Please be seated. When you come forward to speak to this item, please announce your name and address and whether or not you have been sworn. Thank you.
Okay, today we have four public hearing items on the consent agenda, and we will start with P 60.
P 60 is, we have proof of publication in the Tampa Bay Times edition of November 27th, 2024.
Item P 60 is a comprehensive plan amendment to amend in the name of CPA 2406, which is to amend the wells, wellfields, and wellhead production areas map, providing for a transmittal of a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map 2-1, wells, wellfields, and wellhead production areas, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency. This is PDE 250061. I'd like to note that we can do a presentation if so desired. This will result in a county-initiated ordinance, which will be subject to the state's requirements for business impact estimates according to state statute, Section 125 663A. There was a slight typo in the agenda memo noting Section 126, 663A.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to pull the item just for some positive discussion, so I don't think we need a presentation, but if you pull it, we'll just discuss it quickly.
We'll move on to P 61.
P 61, we have proof of publication in the Tampa Bay Times edition of November 27th, 2024.
Thank you. Item P 61 is PDE 250062. This is the transmittal hearing for CPA 2411, which is the ADU text amendment to the comprehensive plan. This will be transmitting the item to Florida Commerce. The amendment would be to Chapter 2 of the future land use element, Appendix Section Flu A6, the official land use map, and Chapter 6, the housing element, the glossary, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency. There is a presentation if so desired.
Board members, do you need a presentation? This will come back to us, the ordinance will come back to us.
I'll go for none.
Okay. All right, we'll leave it on consent. P 62?
You need to see if there's any...
Oh, is there anyone wishing to speak to this?
We have no one pre-signed up or online for this matter.
Okay.
P 62, proof of publication in the Tampa Bay Times, November 27th, 24, supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P 62 is PDE 257839. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Sarah Jones Barnyard Rezoning, which is a change in zoning from a AC agricultural district to a AR agricultural residential district in northeast Pasco County on the east side of Powerline Road, approximately a quarter mile north of Frazee Hill Road, locating approximately 6.03 acres. This comes to you with the recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission and Planning Development Economic Coast Department.
Does anyone have any questions on this one? Okay, is there anyone from the public that wishes to address P 62?
I just have to, if they'll speak against, there is nobody.
Yeah, we have no one signed up. We have two people online. One is the applicant. The second person, I believe, is the applicant's or is a representative for the applicant.
All right, seeing...
Let's check and make sure that that's... Is it?
Ms. Hap, Hillary Hap?
Okay, are you raising your hand that you want to address P 62?
I'm the applicant.
Oh, you're the applicant, okay. But if no one wishes to speak against it, we'll leave it on consent?
Okay.
I don't believe we have anyone.
Okay, P 63?
P 63, we have proof of publication in the December 25th, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P 63 is TED 250018. This is a development agreement in the name of Hawk Longleaf LLC. It's to design permit and construct wiggly widening in exchange for cash reimbursements in West Pasco on Starkey Boulevard from south of Marshall Drive to north of Fanning Springs Drive North. This comes with the recommendation to approve the development agreement.
Any questions? All right, is there anyone to speak against this, either here or online? As I see the applicant's attorney.
We have no one online pre-signed for this matter.
Okay, let's leave it on consent, and I'll take a motion for P 61, 62, and 63.
Move approval. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we'll take up P 60. Jack?
Yes. Madam Chair, if I could, just a minute. The people from Hudson Water Works drove all the way over here to kind of show appreciation for what we've done. This was an industrial piece of property that, a piece that I thought would be great for the use. It came up that the concern about Hudson Water Works and the water supply, so for that reason, I want to thank the applicant, Terry, David Allen, the whole team, as far as putting together, doing a study, doing it right, so that when now we make our next steps, we know we're going to protect the people from Hudson Water Supply. And I think the gentleman from Hudson Water would like to speak, so.
Okay.
I just want to give him the opportunity. He drove all the way over here, so give him the opportunity to say a few words.
My name is John Henry. I'm the utility director of Hudson Water Works, and I'd like to say that Pasco County has been a great help with this, getting this taken care of, and we really appreciate the help and would like to continue to work with Pasco County and really appreciate everything that's been done. It's been a very good experience for us. Thank you.
That's excellent.
With that, I'll move approval?
One second. I need to know if I need his address.
Oh, sorry, eight-seven-two-four, New York Avenue.
Well, you're not at the mic, so one second.
No, that's, can you, did you pick that up?
Okay, they're good.
But you need to call for public comment because you didn't.
All right, I will.
When it was pulled off.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this item?
We have no one signed up in advance or online.
Okay, and then we.
Move approval?
One second. And this is a roll call vote? Nope, it's not. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are on to P.
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four, gosh, we're ripping through today.
We have proof of publication of this item in the Tampa Bay Times, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. It was originally scheduled for the November twelfth Board of County Commissioners meeting, where it was continued to today.
Good afternoon, Amy Toll with Planning Development and Economic Growth. So, the item before you is the transmittal hearing for a county-initiated map amendment. This is a comprehensive plan map amendment to map two dash thirteen and two dash twenty-two. Map two dash thirteen is your rural areas, map two dash twenty-two is the urban service area. So, the purpose of this comprehensive plan amendment is to remedy a conflict between policies and maps that are embedded within the comprehensive plan right now. So, here's a little project overview. So, in June two thousand and six, the rural areas, or Board of County Commissioners approved map two dash thirteen, which essentially created the rural areas. The rural areas comprises of four geographic areas, rural area one, two, three, and four. This amendment is specific to rural area four. Additionally, August two thousand and ten, the BCC established the urban service area. So, the urban service area, urban concentration area, is intended to prioritize density and intensity within that area to ensure that there's adequate infrastructure in place to accommodate that level of density and intensity. So, essentially, what's happening here is, in the rural areas, there's a conflict with your urban service area. So, what we're proposing is to amend this portion, remove it from the urban, from the rural areas, rural area four, which is your neighborhood protection area. So, we're recommending to remove that from the rural neighborhood protection area, and amend the urban service area. Currently, as you can see on this map, it is a hatched area that is, um, uh, symbolizing that it is considered the expansion area, which means the county has envisioned this area at a later date and to ensure adequate, uh, public facilities are in place to accommodate levels of density and intensity in this area, and then amend the future land use to incorporate it from the urban expansion area into the urban service area. So, that's what's occurring here. So, uh, the rural area is consistent with policy flu two point three point two, the establishment of the rural neighborhood protection areas. It is important to highlight that the intent of this policy is to preserve areas that include existing rural neighborhoods that deserve and require special protection from intrusion of urban uses. So, this is gonna be the, the area that's on the west side of old, or east side of Old Pasco Road. Here's just a zoomed-in version to show that this is the only portion of the rural area that we are proposing an amendment to. So, this is a general, um, depiction of the rural area four. So, the intent of this visual is to highlight the existing neighborhoods that are in place. The neighborhoods that will be highlighted predate the establishment of the rural areas, which means these neighborhoods were in place prior to two thousand and six. So, the overall intent of the rural neighborhood protection area is not being diminished or impacted by this change. Additionally, the Cypress Creek Preserve runs through the rural neighborhood protection area, which further provides that buffering protection to the existing established neighborhoods. So, um, in the red circle is one of the neighborhoods that has been identified. We also have an existing platted neighborhood as well, here, here, and here. So, these are essentially your rural neighborhood protection areas. As you can see, the development pattern that is currently in place on the west side of Old Pasco Road, which is predominantly the rural neighborhood protection area, is not the same type of development pattern that has already been approved with the higher levels of density, compact development design on the east side of Old Pasco Road. Additionally, um, the wetland map kind of further depicts those levels of protection. So, as you can see, this area is predominantly category one wetland, which means it's not impacted. So, that level of buffer is going to remain in place. These are the areas that were previously identified. So, this is the map that's embedded within the comprehensive plan that's required to be updated. So, the amendment is proposing just to remove the subject area as highlighted on this map. And then we'll go into the urban service area. So, that was kind of your briefing on the, the rural areas, and now your urban service area. So, the urban service area is actually under an umbrella of your urban concentration area. So, your urban concentration area includes the urban service area and the urban expansion area. Again, as noted, this was considered the urban expansion area. The urban expansion area is included to accomplish through a comprehensive plan amendment that basically demonstrates compliance with provisions of state and local law, and ensures that adequate public facilities are in place when we make that change into the urban service area. This area is predominantly highway or, or I seventy-five, as you can see, to the north. It is State Road fifty-two. We also have Overpass that kind of is, is to the south. So, the levels of the density and intensity that occurs within this area has essentially already been approved and planned for, as well as adequate public facilities have been analyzed with those projects that came in to ensure that that's in place in this area. So, this is what the map would look like with the proposed change. So, the, all the red area would now be the urban service area instead of the urban expansion area. It is consistent with policy flu nine point one point seven. This is the overall map, two dash two, with the proposed change. As you can see, uh, the green area, you'll notice over on three oh one, that is considered the expansion area for the purposes of this amendment. We are only focusing on the area that is north of, um, Overpass, south of, north and south of State Road fifty-two, um, around the I seventy-five corridor. These are additional policies that the proposed amendments are consistent with. And again, this is the transmittal hearing, so, um, we would recommend authorizing transmittal to the Department of Commerce, AKA Florida State, or Florida Commerce and other reviewing agencies. Also, to put on note, this did, uh, because it is staff initiated, there was a BIE established with this. It is pursuant to section one twenty-five point six-six-three A. In the agenda memo, it does say one twenty-six point six-six-three A. So, that's just to, to let you know that that's the actual amendment. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Commissioner Mariana?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things that concerns with this area is all to the south part, all the way down Old Fifty-four, all the apartments that are approved that are coming out of the ground right now. Those were out in the camp, uh, those of us who were on the campaign, you got to hear about, a lot about infrastructure being in place before development gets done. Years ago, when we were looking at setting up these areas all over the county, one of the areas that we looked at was Bexley. And Bexley was gonna be coming in, there was nothing there. But we're gonna take Bexley all the way up to fifty-two, and then it was just, well, let's go all the way above fifty-two into Shady Hills. You've heard many times from people in the past two years now, probably all about Shady Hills, what's going on there. Even heard it this morning in an initial conversation. I just got an email about the Del Webb development that's going in, that's crowding that whole roadway. So, I've got, uh, all sorts of families there now with no sidewalks in place, or very little sidewalks in place, and it's a very dangerous situation with two narrow roads with a lot of construction going on. When trucks are pulling in, trucks pulling out, it's causing issues that are, that are out there. Never mind the worry about impacts as far as what, what else is gonna happen around it. So, I, I know in time, this is the right thing to do, but right now, there's a development we approved at the last month's meeting, the last month's meeting here, where we had an, I think, a sixty or seventy-foot lot, uh, project right above this, uh, in, in the midst of this area here.
You okay? Someone fell.
I just wanted to.
Bless you.
Give everybody adrenaline rush there.
Gonna watch these people.
Now, where were we, Commissioner?
So, with that development we approved, uh, with the sixty or seventy-foot lots, the single family home thing, we tried to find a way to, like, get the road built up to that point. And there's another development that's going on down below it, on the, on the other side of the road that's coming up, but there was no way to make it happen. Now, when I look over here at, at, uh, item sixty-two, no, sixty-three, we just approved, somehow there's the development agreement to make sure the roadway widening was done with that development coming in. I've talked with Nick Urin, I've talked with both developers coming in to try to get this done, edit on, and we couldn't. So, what's gonna happen is, that first development's gonna come in, the other one may come in, they're gonna come talk to us. And if I don't have a way to build these roads, I'm gonna create more congestion than ever, and, and I don't have the infrastructure in place or a way to make it where I can build it up. And I know it's a tough priority, this commission, but it's not done yet. And if we allow this, I'm just wondering, how are we gonna allow these floodgates to open before we're ready for it, thereby getting more the wrath of our citizens, saying, you should've had the infrastructure in place before you opened up? So, I, I hesitate opening this up, and I understand it's gonna come, and probably not far away, but I just wonder if it might be a little bit too soon, or is there a way that we can start making these roads to be built instead of being built with a turn lane here, a turn lane there, get torn out? Is there a way we can stop making this happen to get these things done together, so it doesn't impact the residents the way it's going right now?
Sure. So, I can speak to the CIP currently. I don't have a visual aid here, unfortunately. But the data that's being worked on in Pasco map, or what we're calling right now, is being updated. However, there are already funded widening of Old Pasco Road, I believe into twenty twenty-six, for about halfway through the urban service area, um, or the addition of the urban service area. Additionally, the northern extension of Old Pasco Road is coming in with the Gateway Hub project. And so, um, essentially, the infrastructure, or at least the transportation network, will be in place within the next couple of years, I'd say, at a minimum, with the widening that are occurring.
That is completely different from the information I'm getting from my company here, when this stuff's coming together.
Sure.
So, it's, it's, it's like.
A good hearing item, Barbara, you'll get your opportunity.
I know, she represents Del Webb, so.
So.
Yeah, the Del Webb is, is not part of this as well.
So, anyway, so I have these concerns about making this change right now when we're not, not set to have this road built out the way it should be. I just don't wanna go through another, uh, situation like I'm gonna go through in Shady Hills right now. And I, and I haven't got that insurance from staff yet, maybe get Nick Urin on the line, he can talk about it a little bit, but, it does, it does concern me.
I can give you an answer.
Okay, go ahead.
Barbara Willhite, eighty-six twenty-seven, Grand Boulevard, Newport Richie. So, I would say that this is a, the staff is bringing this forward because you have an error.
Right.
Inconsistent mapping. We're not gonna move anything forward if we don't correct our errors, but you're asking questions regarding specific projects, which I do represent. The proj, and this doesn't have anything to do with that project, although clearing up your mapping will certainly help projects move forward. But to your specific concern, I share your concern, Commissioner. And, uh, we met at noon today for the project that's on the east side of Old Pasco Road, and I was directed to put together a meeting with your county engineer and your county attorney's office to work on a development agreement to improve that road. So, we understand clearly, um, but this is an important step to be able to move forward. It's an important step so you can clear up a mistake in your plan. But, um, you're heard loud and clear, all of you are, regarding infrastructure needs, and we take it seriously. So, if you please move this forward, um, we will continue to work on that development agreement. I saw the one for Starkey and sent it to my team. We talked about it at our meeting at noon, so. Didn't know you were gonna bring it up, Commissioner, but I'm on top of it, and I would hope you'd move this forward, thank you.
And Barbara, you've been good working as we try to work with you, gentlemen, just like we're with Fox people as well. So, again, I just wanna make sure the board's aware that we need to make sure we're gonna fix this, otherwise we're just gonna cry.
But the money to fix it comes from the impact fees. Not from commercial, or not from office, not from industrial, the, the way to get the money to widen roads and put in infrastructure comes from the impact fees paid, right?
Well, we used to do pipeline projects, it worked pretty good.
The what?
Pipeline projects. The developer would help us, they'd build them up front, they'd get reimbursed with the fees down.
Yeah, and I think that there's gonna be some discussions with county administration and others on how to feed that pipeline a little better. At least, we had a conversation on that yesterday, the county administrator and I.
Again, that's why I'm bringing it up. It says something that I know we need to focus on, I know staff's doing the right thing, bringing it forward. I know the developers wanna help us, but somehow we gotta find a way to make it all happen.
And, and, um, I do think it's important that we fix this mistake, um, and move this forward, but I also like the wisdom in being a little more proactive on how we get these roads done more quickly. Anyone else have any comments? Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Okay.
See, no one move approval?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one passes. But I think you've heard us on that, okay. All right, so we are back to Commissioner Items, right? No, I didn't do mine, and he didn't do his, and he didn't do his. Don't leave. After the county administr, were you done? Cause, okay, then we will move to, I think it's the, is it the county attorney? Okay.
Picking up where Mike left off. Just wanna remind the board that that CDBG DR program, administrator and I have had these conversations, is not, um, it's not like ARPA, it's not like several of the other ones. There are many more strings, many more hoops to jump through. So, that's an important part of how we're going to be bringing this forward, so that we spend the money pursuant to the federal, code of federal regulations, and nobody claws anything back.
Right, and it's a reimbursement.
Yes.
So, you have to spend the money, and then you bill them, and then you get the money. So, um, we have to be very careful, because we don't wanna spend money and not get it back. Cause where else is that gonna come but from reserves? Right.
That's it.
Okay.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, Clerk Alvarez-Holles wanted me to bring one item to your attention. On today's agenda is the, under item N one oh two, is the twenty twenty-five annual audit plan. The plan was established after conducting a risk assessment, uh, with your staff. As part of that assessment, the Attorney General interviewed, uh, I'm sorry, the Inspector General interviewed the county's management team, as well as Clerk's Office Management Team. The clerk would like to express her appreciation to the county and the Clerk's Management Team for their efforts during the risk assessment, and the Inspector General looks forward to working with your teams, your county, uh, administration and management teams throughout the year on these audits. Thank you.
What number was that?
Uh, N one oh two.
Okay, I'm gonna look at that a little bit. Okay, so now we're on to me, I have no idea if we sent pictures or not, but, um, okay. Before the holidays, uh, this, my staff and, um, the Commission on the Status of Women attended the Women's Conference of Florida at the Tampa Convention Center, and it was absolutely wonderful. They had great speakers. It's the second time I've attended this event, there were thousands of, of, of women at this conference, and, um, and I hope that we can, um, send, uh, people again next year to, to this event. Also, uh, we volunteered at the Metropolitan Ministries. We always, we always like doing this, and I, my staff went out and bought a whole bunch of Christmas presents for me, and we also delivered those to Met Min tent, um, earlier. But it's, um, it's an amazing well-oiled machine, the way they, they worked this tent during the holidays, and we always love participating in it. And actually, Commissioner Jaeger, through your influence, uh, when we were doing food out in the holiday area, Mile Stretch, you know, um, can't remember his name now, but he was doing his barbecue? Joiner, Gary Joiner? We weren't getting a good, good amount of people coming up to it, it, cause it was behind us, in the back of the St. Paul de Vista Church. So, I actually loaded up my car, and Jenny and I went door to door, um, on those streets there in the Mile Stretch, and I, and I found a, um, a gentleman who had no car, no food, no food stamps, no nothing. We have, my, we have to get with him, wanna make sure our county goes and visits him. And, um, I've been bringing him food ever since. But, um, yeah, so, um, you've set a great example for all of us to follow. I would like to reappoint Bobby D. Philippe, I don't know what that was, what was that?
Oh, sorry, it was the Marcher Plan. Did you want to talk about that?
Oh, so we have a date?
Yes.
Okay. I hadn't seen this. So this is our first county-initiated community food distribution, and we are putting this on ourselves. And as you see, it's down at Mile Stretch, so I'm going to guess that's, again, at the St. Vincent de Paul Church. Everyone will be contacted, and your staff, and it's, you know, volunteer, county volunteers, and we hope that we will have a very productive distribution for the, for the area. Okay, because that's not on my notes, sorry. So I want to reappoint Bobby Di Filippi to the Tourist Development Council.
She'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And you all should have gotten your list. I thought, there's very few changes, I believe, in continuity. Commissioner Oakley, I don't know why you think, thought Commissioner Mariano was not on Tampa Bay Water, but he is.
I didn't see him on the list, though.
You know, it's, they, my staff did it a little differently. I don't know where it is.
It was on one, but not the other.
Okay. But I don't need to read this out. You all got this down and okay with everything? We took off the, the one that was on here, which was the Withlacoochee State Trail, because there is no Withlacoochee State Trail Council. But I am going to ask you for updates, important updates from the committees that you serve on, and I always say this when I'm on my committees, I don't represent me, I represent us. And so--
Jack and I gave ours today, this morning.
Yeah, yeah. So we don't need another Tampa Bay Water update. But I would ask that if something important's going on, you know, it's like a minute for committees, and let us know what's going on. Like, I am very curious what's going on with Springs, the Springs Council, because that's, there's money there, and that affects our northwestern part of the county. So, and, you know, I think Commissioner Waitman is on that one.
It's, that's, how that works is the committee, it's CFI funding, essentially what, a little bit of money comes down, CFIs. So the Springs Committee's made up of myself, Kelly Rice, its owner, Swiftwood, Mayor of City of Crystal River, and, you know, conglomerate, and then that board vets, the CFI funds that the Swiftwood Governing Board come down, and then we vote it that way. So it's not, when you guys discussed it last meeting, the, the funding, I think, what you think's available was misinterpreted. So--
I think they were subject to sewer convergence.
But again, that's dictated by the Swiftwood Governing Board, and then they hand it, like, we, we go through it and vet it and bless it, and then ultimately the Swiftwood Governing Board votes. But anything important, it was interesting, like, we learn all sorts of different things, like where Bull Shark, one of the leading areas of Bull Shark mating grounds are. So I won't say any of this, Mike, because it might impact some tourism that's close to us. But there's some interesting, fun facts for trivia that come out of that group I talked to Carvalho about that last year. So, yes, I'm happy to share.
Those aren't the happy, smiley ones.
Those are the just, those are just the garbage disposals of, they'll just bite your top, say, but yeah, but I hear you. Just maybe any kind of funding opportunity else.
Okay. Because I, I thought they had subject to sewer money in a certain shed area. Okay, so if there's, I guess, I think that's it. I think then you got your committee assignments. I'll see some of you on Friday. Big meeting Friday.
Love you.
Shortest meeting you've ever had, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you all for, for a great meeting. All right, we are done.
That's true.
Are you going to gather them out?
Yeah.